I have not. So I call the Monday, February 27th meeting of the Audit Committee to order. Welcome. So. The, moving on to. Agenda item to the action items. Have you all had an opportunity to read and review the January 23rd minutes?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
And anybody second?
Second.
All right. Does anybody object to approving these minutes? All right. The minutes have been approved. Moving right along. Um, has everyone had an opportunity to look at Auditor Sims? Masterly synthesis of budget content considerations. It's a memo that came out today. Has everyone had a chance to look at that? No? Okay. All right. Um. Marwan, you're, you haven't had a chance to look at it?
No, you said it came out earlier today?
Yeah.
No, I have not had a chance to look at that.
Okay, then, um. Can you get it on your email right now?
I surely can.
Yes. I am happy about that. Um. Okay, uh. I thought this was a great memo and I would love to discuss it. Shall we move through? Um. Well, I don't really know what to do, actually. When, Quinn, have you had an opportunity to look at the? Jenny's memo on budget content considerations?
No, whenever anything comes out the first day, I, I work a regular nine to five, so I won't, I won't be checking anything day of.
Yeah.
Just, just in, in future reference, but no, I have not either.
All right. Well, I would like you particularly to review a few salient points in that. Is this okay with everybody? If we look at, go through this memo a bit?
Yep.
Okay, so. It's not appropriate to say gentlemen, start your engines, but committee members, please access this memo.
I, if I could start, kick us, kick us off, I did have a few kind of comments. I think it's a great memo. I was wondering if we could add in the scope section or somewhere that all of the points listed are not in a particular order. Meaning that they're, they're kind of an equal weight. Jenny, if that makes sense.
Okay. You think there's an expectation that the first item mentioned will be that of greatest importance?
I think that's common. I think people usually read lists and they take a first kind of couple, couple glances at it. And they read the first three and they think that those are the, the most salient points.
May I suggest that in the final sentence of the scope? Where it says, please note the list of considerations is not intended to be comprehensive. Or prioritized or listed in order of importance?
Unless they were, Jenny, I'd love to hear from you to know, was that your intent?
Jenny, you're muted.
Jenny, yeah, you're muted.
Yeah, no, it wasn't my intent that it's in order of priority. I don't know. I, I wouldn't be able to identify a priority, I don't think. So I can add the phrase or something similar to what Anna just proposed and that'd be great if that covers it for everybody.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Objection. Oh, I'm so sorry to interrupt.
No, it's okay. Good call, Max.
Thank you, Max. Okay, so not intended to be comprehensive or listed in order of importance or listed.
Priority.
Yeah. Okay, so moving right along, can we, has everyone had a chance to look at this scope? And be impressed by it? Because I think that using as a sorting feature, the distinguished budget presentation award in 2021 from the Government Finance Officers Association is a brilliant stroke. Okay.
Um, so, so most of the items that are listed in here are not necessarily, you know, I think that the GFOA, which is what the Government Finance Officers Association is referred to as. I think that they actually have a pretty comprehensive list of criteria that they look at when they're evaluating whether or not you're going to get the award. I didn't really rely on that so much as I just, my personal opinion, maybe professional opinion is appropriate. Of what was lacking or what could be improved in our budget is really what I went by. And then when I looked at what other cities are doing, when Christine and I looked at that, we used cities that had received that award and Bremerton has received the award in the past. They're just not currently getting it. So.
I, I wanted to add a comment that I really, really appreciate as a citizen. The emphasis on different ways of engaging the citizenry, that, the, the. What am I looking for? The, the residents of Bremerton? The constituents, I guess, would be the best way to put it and that you, you looked at a lot of different ways to do that and I, and I, I don't know, I guess I'd encourage the city. I'm saying this for the council people present. To consider more than one way to do this because not everybody is going to be grabbed by the same thing. So one person may love the graphics, another person may have time for meetings, et cetera. So anyway, thank you.
And I kind of want to piggyback off what Deborah said because I, I agree and, and coming from a private kind of environment where we have a bit more resources to do more thorough budgets. So, you know, with that context in mind. In kind of the private sector, a lot of the times what you see is, is multiple cuts of a certain budget. So a cut, you know, for, for say citizens, a cut for say administrators and a cut for say, you know, financially savvy people. And, and I, I think you kind of alluded to that Jenny in the memo, but if there's a way maybe to suggest that if there's the resources available to do that, that would be helpful, I think, for citizens. You know, rather than a 30, 50 page document that no one has time to read. You know, a simple three-page document that they can just skim. And, and granted, yes, you know, exhibits help with that and keep, you know, like you alluded to, you know, different, different views help with that, but people get overwhelmed, I think, with, with massive documents. And, and they don't even bother. So I think just having, you know, three different cuts and a varying length could potentially help.
Well, I do know that our resources are skeletal for budget when you say that. So e- even my suggestions, you know, I have to keep it in mind. That we really, so I refer to, hey, Bainbridge Island had a great write-up from the finance officer. And Mike Riley says, you realize that the city of Bainbridge Island has 10 people in their budget department. We have one point something.
Holy cow.
Yeah, so it's a.
Sure, that's, that's fair.
Yeah, but I, I did try to get to that in here, in different ways, just proposing, you know, two-page graphics or I, I can't remember if it made it to the report, to the memo, but one of the cities had like a 30-page, ours is 300 pages or something.
Yeah, it's crazy.
I mean, it's a lot.
It's, and, and for those of us who are not finance leads or ma- as mathematically inclined as you and Max are. That's just a whole lot of nigo. My eyes are going to glaze over by about page 20. You know, if I knew it was only 30 pages, I could probably power through it, but oh my God. Um. I also wanted to put a bug in Anna and Quinn's ear regarding. And I think Eric might know the history, might be able to give you some more texture on why we went to annual from biennial budgets. Because that also strikes me as a way to get a little more manpower behind it.
Well. Um, it was my understanding so far that council felt that a biennial budget gave them even less control over the budget process.
Well, the comment, I have that comment in my memo, but that was just kind of generally speaking what MRSC's feedback has been about the biennial budget. It, I don't know Bremerton specific. It sounded like it was a change in the mayor. Just the timing of it was going from, you know, one mayor, only one mayor did it. It was Lynn Horton. I, I don't know the former mayors. I'm a little bit familiar of Kerry Bozeman. Not personally, but just some of the history, but under his leadership, it was changed.
Well, I will confirm with Eric on Wednesday. And.
Yeah, see if he knows any more about that history because it may not be purely. And Jenny alluded to this. I think some of it may be political control. As well, so.
Yes, that was what I meant by council having even less control over the budget.
Got it, got it, yeah. It actually makes me happier.
I will confirm with Eric. I'd just like to throw in right here that a majority of the new council after this, this year's budget, after the 2022 budget hearings agreed that the process needed to be more transparent and to give us greater time to be, to give a thoughtful review of the budget. So, just, you know, I'm just saying. And I vow that I will ask Eric. All right. Um, please go ahead. Does anyone else have anything on item one in this memo?
Not item one, but I have a comment on item nine.
Okay, well, I have a really quick comment on item 1D, which is, I thought this was a great way to the Roseville, Minnesota, a really great way to make sure that you're getting feedback from Bremerton residents. With a survey where the residents provide their name and address, answer three questions, submit the form. I, I thought that was an excellent and simple thing. And of course, it would rely on a, a budget that told a story and was clear to laypeople. Um.
I believe that that's Jeff Coughlin's hometown.
The Roseville, Minnesota? He is a master researcher in like, what, what is anybody else doing?
Well, I, I'm not sure. Christine knew that he's from Roseville, Minnesota, and so she looked up what they had going on and she saw, she saw that, so.
See, I didn't know that. Okay.
I think that's how it came about.
All righty then. Um, okay, so nobody else has anything on, on item one? And we're all okay with the intent, increase the opportunity? Yes.
I'm raising my hand.
I'm so sorry, Christine, please go.
I just want to give credit. It was Jeff Coughlin who forwarded that newsletter to, you know, he forwarded like the whole thing and said, hey, take a look at this.
You know, that guy needs to join a support group for like people who research too much. It's really impressive. Thank you, Christine. Um, so on number two, you're, you don't have anything until item nine, Mike, Max, right? Okay, anything on number two? Because basically this is, and Quinn can back me up, this is because he's been through two budgets. I've only been through one. It was, a lot of it was, you know, here's our department, here's how it's organized, here's what we do, here's what we did last year, here's what we're gonna do in 2023. And then after we had absorbed all this new information, then we were hit with figures and how they were apportioned among the general and various special funds. So just breaking it down into here's how your government works. Sometime in September, for example, might help increase resident participation. So. Everybody okay with that? You can be grouchy about it later. You don't have to be grouchy right now. Just be grouchy by email. Um, and then number three, just more time, like last year we had, I think, eight days, maybe nine days between the budget being published and our final questions and answers.
I would, I would even actually suggest maybe putting in a suggestion for a certain portion of time. So just being a little bit more, say, five business days or, you know, seven business days or whatever we feel appropriate. Uh, just to put a little bit more suggestion in the suggestion.
Okay, so modifying the budget calendar to provide council at least 14 business days, at least 10 business days?
Yeah.
So be a little more prescriptive, kind of.
Does that seem okay by everyone else?
At, at least that. There were a lot of citizens that wanted to weigh in and, and they felt like there wasn't enough time.
You and me both. Okay, so what do you think? Like, do you think if the, and here I'm addressing you, Marwan, English really needs a something to say singular versus plural. Christine, I see you. If we had the educational presentation and, and we increased the outreach about what was going to happen? Do you think? We could then have like, for example, one evening could be just the public works presentation? Or just the finance? Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think that would be helpful. And then I think you were talking about even setting up some, I don't know if this was you that was going to do it. Setting up small town, uh, town hall meetings where people can come in and discuss. Was that something that you discussed right before a budget was approved last year?
Well, to do it as, as district meetings. I, I know that's something that we are planning to do for the comp plan. I've already done one. For the comp plan, but, okay, um.
I would, I would think even combined district meetings, I mean, you might not have to have six separate. That's a lot of overhead, I'm thinking to, for each council person, seven, sorry, seven. District meetings is a lot of overhead to plan and organize for some districts, it might not pay off, right? So. We don't know until, we don't know what we don't know, but just a thought, if you could do three or four.
Okay, um, I'm going to call on Christine in just a minute. I do a monthly town hall. So for me, it's easy, but finding a venue. Um, a free venue takes quite a while. I am fortunate in that the public works facility is in my district. So I think that having all of these at City Hall might turn out to be simpler, like that kind of like combining all seven of them. Yeah. Oh, I'm so sorry, Vice President, please go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Christine, you have been patient sitting on a monument. Please speak.
Okay, I want to make sure I'm not muted. Can you hear me? Okay, so just working back because I, because I'm council staff. We kind of dial in with finance on scheduling the workshops and on, you know, for council's calendar. You know, study sessions, public hearings, all of that. So I wanted to clarify, are we talking about? When we're talking 10 business days, that's just when it's presented, you know, it's after the workshops, it's been presented, but it's not coming to council yet. So are you basically tacking on an additional 10 days? Because currently we have two hearings scheduled. That's actually more than 10 business days. And people can speak at each hearing and they can provide written comments during the workshops and the study sessions. So I'm just trying to work backwards and see what the intent of the 10 business days would be to help, you know, I'm visualizing this calendar and how, how do we tell?
So on October 19th of last year, the budget was published on the city website. On October 27th of last year, the final questions and answers on the budget were held. So that's like one.
And then the first hearing was the next week. Okay.
Yeah, so it was like literally eight calendar days later. Six business days. So really at least 10 business days. And if that means that the budget has to be published earlier in order to meet with the other. You know, the other requirements of the RCW. Then that's what we're recommending is however, almost on Christine, like whatever has to be done to give us more time so that we're not, we and the public aren't subjected to a fire hose of information. Please go ahead, Christine. Thank you.
My, my last question, Chair, was. So would this come after that initial presentation? And then am I assuming that the proposed town hall and extra time to digest the budget would happen in that window? And then we would come to the public hearings? Is that how that would play out?
Um.
As a suggestion, I'm just trying to see if that's where we're going.
Yeah, right now, the time after you.
I would just like to say that what I've done in this memo is to try to present some ideas without pinpointing it, you know, like increase the opportunity for public engagement to facilitate a more meaningful exchange of ideas between the government and residents. The city of Redmond's doing this. The city of Kirkland's doing this. The city of Roseville, Minnesota is doing this. I'm not telling them what to do or how to do it. I'm just saying, you know, increase, generally speaking, you know, you need to increase the opportunity for public engagement. Here's some ideas about how you might want to go about that. They may come up with something totally different. You know, same with the calendar. Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's going to be a long discussion. It's going to be, what does council want? How do they want to see it play out? You know, you're gonna maybe want to modify the whole calendar by ordinance and I don't want to be pinpointing. It needs to be by 10 days, you know, I. Anyway, that's what I've tried to do in the memo is to leave it, you know, here's the general problem. Here's some ways that you might fix it, but I wasn't going to dictate the specifics. Max?
Thank you very much for the correction.
And I, I completely agree with you, Jenny. I don't think we want to like be, you know, this is what you have to do versus this is what was best practice. And I, I wonder, you know, to that, to that end, if you, if your research, I don't want to make you do more work, but if your research has shown, you know, what best practices among the cities that you quoted, how many days maybe they have given their citizens to, to review? And if maybe we could quote that as a minimum? Or just to say that if we do, if we do go out with a 10-day, you know, business suggestion that we say, you know, we preface it to say that this isn't, you know, I don't know the best way to phrase that, but this isn't, you know, the, an ironclad rule from, this is just a suggestion. And something to consider.
I think that the 10 days is going to be arbitrary. You know, I'm not, I'm not sure what I'll pinpoint on. And also if it if it didn't work, you know, it could come back at me. You know, it really should be them, you know, here's your problem, fix it.
Yeah.
I, I quickly just to follow you. I do want to, you know, just say that I do think giving a certain number though is valuable because people tend to gloss over suggestions without concrete details.
I agree that that is true, but I think Jenny's point is that these are seven, the council is seven different people, all with equal autonomy. So it's not like I can go to them and say, or Quinn and I even can go to them and say, the audit committee has decided this. You know, accept or reject. It's, it's something for them to look at and discuss. And if they say, I don't know, you know, I've got enough on my plate. You think about it, but it has to be brought to council and I think that's a, is that making sense?
It does, but I think then arrange would be appropriate admin.
Okay.
What did you say, Max?
Arrange.
Yeah, suggested range.
Okay, so let's put that on the, let's put a pin in that and, and Deb, is it okay if we just call each other by first names in this meeting? Everybody okay with that?
Absolutely.
All right, Deborah.
I think, I think, I think Marwan was ahead of me, so I'll.
No, go ahead, Deborah. I'll, I'll jump in after you.
Okay. Okay, so. Two things to add. One. I hear what you're saying about being prescriptive with. I guess first of all, we can't solve all of these calendaring issues in this meeting and it's really not our place to do that, so. I'm gonna give that up. And. Two. Maybe be a little softer in your suggestion to say, for example, town XYZ gives their citizens 10 days to respond after initial publication. So, so in other words, give examples and those examples might lead council to consider something along those lines so that you're not saying, oh, we should do this. I, I get that. Anyway, those are my thoughts.
It's kind of in there in 1A. The city of Redmond hosted five public meetings in 2022, including one in July and one in August.
Right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Marwan, please go ahead.
It is, my, my question was, you know, we're, you were to list the 10 days just because we're talking about that. And the question is really for Anna and Quinn. Would it be more beneficial to have it tacked on to that, the, the five days, which it was last year? Or the six days and then adding the 10 there or putting it before? What would be more advantageous for the community to have more time to, you know, digest it? Come back with their, with their thoughts and potentially sway the council? Where it doesn't appear to be just a foregone conclusion. I think some folks in the community had a sense that it was like, okay, we're, we're saying what we gotta say, but, you know, you guys have already made your decision.
Um, I would. I think that that's a valuable input. I would also add that the budget is prepared by the mayor and staff. Like by the entire executive branch and the first time that council sees it typically is when it is put up on the website, like last year on October 19th. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Did you, did you have any further? Oh, I'm, I'm so sorry, Jenny, please go ahead.
You know, I think that's also important too, is, is the suggestion is to get the word out more than to articulate that also because the community doesn't have that understanding. And so I think to clarify those things is, is really impactful in understanding what the process is. I mean, that's one of the major reasons why I wanted to sit on this committee. It was to learn as a citizen and also share that information out.
Thank you. Jenny, did you want to respond to this before I call on Quinn?
Well, well, I'd just like to get clarification. Is it the, is the date that we're talking about when it's provided to the public? When it's available to the public? When it's available to the public? So like for twenty twenty-four, you know, this is, um, many of the dates relating to the budget. Have a minimum date that they have to occur. And so. Next year, November twenty-one is the deadline. You cannot. Let this happen any later than November twenty-one. That's the date that it's made publicly available. So I think it's council that can, uh, create an ordinance to. Modify the calendar and if they want it, you know, if it's the date. If you're looking to have that ten days earlier, you know, it, it moves a lot of things. There's a. Christine can probably talk about it more, but there's a lot of moving parts with the, uh, budget. You know, the different levels of review that it has to go through and, uh, I don't know, there's, uh. Maybe fifteen different deadlines that they deal with at least. I haven't counted them, but.
And the terminus ad quum, it, the, 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 the delivery date. Yes, we can't move that. The only direction we can go. Is to amend RCWS thirty-five, thirty-three, oh, five, seven, or whatever. Um, to, to allow the public budget to, because when the budget is published is also when it becomes available to council. Those two things are, that's the same action. Um, Max, I see you, but I, Christine is first, so I'll come, coming right back to you, trying to run this democratically. Um, yeah, Christine, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so we are already operating under the twenty twenty-four budget schedule. The first line on it is March first, so they're already, finance is already operating and it's literally calendared out. Including the budget amendments at the end of the year. So this is not set in stone. I'm just saying that we're already, we're already moving. And we actually have the second public hearing on November fifteenth because of the, the holidays. So we're already working backwards from that second public hearing. So, yeah, so that's where I'm coming from as far as just when I hear dates, like there's that and I'm also looking at the BMC. Um, as far as, um. Implementation of the budget, I'm, I'm not clear on. Schedule and a lot of times we just talk to finance and maybe they move when a workshop is or. Plug in some dates, but, but I just wanted to share that, that we are underway.
Yeah, no, totally get that. Um, Christine, while we're in this meeting, can you please just call me Anna? It's really fine. Okay, because I feel weird calling you Christine and having you call me Chair.
Chair, just because you can't see me and I want, I'm, anyway.
Fair enough.
Another, uh, comment slash idea, um, and, and just to go along with, you know, I appreciate that the dates are somewhat firm and. And it's difficult to move dates around, but I wonder, you know, is another kind of thought to that, i- if there's just a way to publicize it better maybe? Because I'm speaking as a citizen, I'm a CPA obviously, but as a citizen, I don't know when this is happening. You know, when I, when I see transit, for instance, having a, a community outreach effort, I see. Posters plastered over every transit stop saying, hey, you know, questions and comments accepted over this right now, please comment. But unless I'm tuned in to this whole city process, I don't even know when this is happening. Uh, so just having some sort of, you know, outreach, uh, even if it's just listed on our website somewhere. Uh, just to put a, a little bit more effort over it.
Oh, heck yeah.
And I know we want to move on. I just wanted to add in there, you know, it's pretty shocking to hear that you're get, you're getting the budget at the same time as everyone else. I, I think you guys should, well, we should all get it a little bit earlier. So you have more time as a council to digest it.
Yeah.
That, that's why the biennial budget makes more sense to me, honestly.
Okay, um, I will add that in my comments to the, to the council. Um, Quinn, you raised your hand earlier. Did you have something?
No, I think it was summarized by Jenny and Christine, um, just that we would have to look at the BMC and also. Knowing that finance is already working on it. And so if we did do any sort of modifications as a council, it would most likely be for. Twenty twenty-four and not for twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-four is the one that's already underway. Uh, but it can still, I think that the date that it's made publicly available could still be modified, even though we're already. Uh, planning the first deadline. We can still adjust the future deadlines.
Yeah, and, and that would be a council decision.
And it would make us so popular with stuff.
Surely they understand.
I promise you, we will become deeply unpopular, but there you have it. Um, anything more on items two or three? Okay, um, I thought item four was great. It's provides context. Anybody have anything else on that one? Okay. Um. Number five is sort of a continuation of that and I really like, as a devoted lover of footnotes. I really liked this.
I, I liked five, but. I, I think it, I took it, maybe my interpretation is different from yours, Anna, because. I took this to mean a true summary, like really succinct. Um. And as she bolded, tell the story.
Yes.
And it, it very, it very much goes into number seven, which. Personally, I think needs to be bumped way up in the list. If we haven't changed our strategic priorities in fourteen years, oh my goodness.
Well, isn't it longer than fourteen? No, you're right. Yeah, fourteen years. All right.
I mean, that's, I think it would be more relevant having the, uh, council priorities that you guys just developed at your retreat. Something like that rather than something, it's, I don't know if you've read that section recently, but it.
Today.
From the budget book.
Yeah. Yeah, and I particularly loved the preservation of natural open space as a major priority. More honored in the breach than the observance.
Yep.
Yeah, um, okay, I'm trying to be a good chair, um. I thought that Jenny, your whole focus on telling a story is. It like that, that's, that's the elevator pitch. That's just like the budget has to tell the story.
And, and Mike Riley knows that. It, it's a, it's a, uh. It, it's a thing in MRSC, you know, your budget needs to tell the story. And, uh, he knows that. They've got a weakness there. So he hasn't seen this memo yet, but it, it won't come as a surprise, I'm sure.
Okay. Um, number six, that just makes really good sense to me. I'm just gonna start moving forward a little because. Un- unless somebody, you know. I love the idea of updating the strategic priorities, not only to align with, um, what we're doing now. But to align with, I don't know. Actions. You know, it's like, what have we done? For the past fourteen years and what are we gonna do? A- anybody have anything else on number seven? Apart from Deborah's conviction that it should go way up to the top.
I agree with Deborah's conviction on that one.
Okay. Okay, Christine, please put that in the minutes.
That. Say that, um. I think you allude to this in the, in the graphic and then some other things, but it's kind of like, what did we say we do? What did we actually do, right? A, a report card. That could be really basic and that graphic is a perfect example of that kind of thing. Where it's like, well, we said we'd do this and we're gonna give ourselves a letter grade. I don't, something. Because right now, the budget to a lot of citizens just feels like a black hole. Yeah, seriously.
I am among them. I'm still working on this stuff.
Yep.
So I'm gonna give you another considered objection to a biennial budget. Which is that we saw in the last year that. The council got four new members out of seven, right? And if we have a biennial budget, that means that within any counselor's four-year term. They'll participate in two budgets only, so they'll sort of get it by the second one, just the way. I am getting it now that I've been through one. Um, so I'm just saying it. Yeah, Max, please go ahead.
I had a quick, quick thought for, for Jenny. Have you heard of a Sankey diagram? I've, I've seen some budgets incorporated. I know some private employers do. Uh, it's a great visual way of, of illustrating where funds, funds flow. Uh, give, give it a look, it, you know, when you have a, when you have a, a second, maybe we can suggest it or if you don't feel it's appropriate, then it's not, but. It's a, it's a really popular visual aid.
How, how do you spell it?
Sankey, S.A.N.K.E.Y.
Not like Banksy the muralist, but Sankey the vigil.
Exactly.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, um, Jenny, did you have anything? Am I like zooming through this too fast?
Well, I, I'm gonna respond to your comment about, uh, the every other year and only having, uh. A chance to participate in the budget a couple of times in a four-year term, uh, there is a mid. Period, uh, adjustment that everyone would participate in. It's just not as extensive. As going through an entire budget process, so, um. But your, your point is well taken, especially when there's so many new people. This is, I think, rare, but Christine would know.
It's rare.
Okay.
All right, um, and finally, at last, Max, leap forward and comment on number nine.
Just a quick, uh, ask if we could maybe add the, the link to the city of Fairfield's, uh. Uh, budget that we mentioned. Uh, I tried Googling it and I couldn't quickly find it, so I was wondering if you could add that.
Anyone else on number nine? Okay, um. All right, so we're making that, um, that change to item number nine. Uh, number ten is completely out of my skies.
Uh, when I spoke with, I think it was Mike, he said that the software would cost about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's not gonna happen.
So, yeah, but if they were going to a biennial. Budget and they needed to get new software anyway, then maybe it would work out. Anyway, it's just a thought. It's not something that anyone has to do. I just put it out there.
I don't, I don't know how it works with the public sector, but is there a way to pull funds from multiple cities to kind of pitch in? And maybe like time share a budget software system? Uh, you know, rather than every city paying a hundred fifty thousand dollars, is there a way to just crowdfund a, a license? That multiple cities can use? I, I don't know.
I can, uh, look into that.
Please do because. I have zero expertise on this.
Cities would share a li- a license? That what it would be looking like?
There might have to be a nominal fee for separate databases or something, but yeah, that might work.
I'll ask our IT people. And if it's. If it is a possibility, then I will add it.
Okay, thank you. So it's number eleven that I was thinking of about the footnotes, like links to the source documents and. That was the one I was thinking about, sorry.
Okay. Did you have additional items that you think should be added? I would have more, but I, I just couldn't.
Really, um. The thing I keep thinking about lately is Einstein's famous dictum that you never really understand something until you can explain it to your grandmother. Right? Um, nobody feels like they're being talked down to if they're being compared to Einstein. I feel pretty sure about that. Um, and it's, it really is. That's like, that's the scarlet thread, I think, that runs through all of this. Is that it's got to tell a story, it's got to speak to the people of Bremerton, um. And it's got to be made shorter because people are not sitting down and reading five-volume Victorian novels anymore.
I can't believe how long the budgets are. Anchorage is over a thousand pages.
Or ten people. Or.
A page per person.
Max.
Or maybe even some sort of podcasts. I don't know if the city does that, of just, you know, some, some, so someone narrating the highlights of a budget. You know, you can read that, you can listen to that over a commute over the ferry, you know, uh, people would do that, I think.
If only we had someone on the audit committee who had experience with podcasts.
Might be somebody.
Marwan hosts a podcast called The Conduit. So, yeah. Um, okay, Marwan, over to you. I know zero about podcasts.
Oh, I think that's, uh, easy enough to do. We did a little bit of that last year. Uh, we're doing that right now for Olympia. Now we've got quite a few people tuning in. I don't know if they're all local here to Kitsap, but some of those, uh, posts have two hundred views. Also, they're very interested in what's happening there. Uh, in any format that can help with access. Uh, so that more people can participate, uh, I'm all for it. Uh, the only other thing I was gonna say for number eleven was, you know, in streamlining this, that there could be a legend that may be tied to. Any of the strategic planning that the, that the city has.
The strategic initiatives, um, the mayor's initiatives. Council goals, priorities.
Yeah, maybe if it was color-coordinated or assembled.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
I'm sure I follow it and I'm the one that's gonna have to add it.
So it basically be like, I, I'm sorry, Marwan, please go ahead.
So, like, let's say for the, um, community block grant funds or things that are earmarked that. Uh, is important would just be somehow a, a, a legend, either it'd be color-coded. Or some type of a, uh, symbol that would just say, hey, this is tied to this. Uh, so we can quickly, as we're scanning it, just see how these things line up with the initiatives of the city.
Right, so. It's like rental assistance and weatherization, just as a, for instance, that would connect to. The S, the strategic priorities, the mayor's initiatives and council goals. It would be a trifecta. Right, with just like a little icon, a colored icon or something just next to it.
Yep, that'd be really easy to.
Is that?
Absolutely, correct.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm writing. Am I missing something? Should I be calling on someone? Okay. Did anyone have anything further on this? Jenny, did we go through it in the, in a way that you felt gave due respect to your hard work?
Oh, I thought it was fine. Everyone's comfortable with the memo. And that we've answered everyone's questions or.
Hey, and it's not even dark yet.
We have more to do.
Miles to go before we sleep. Okay, I had to write that down because I thought that was just really a good idea. Okay, so, uh, what happens next with this, Jenny? You incorporate, you and Christine work on it and take the word draft off it?
Uh, well, that's up to the committee. Uh, if you, you can either say that it's, uh, you can vote to approve it, uh, pending that we will incorporate the changes discussed tonight, and then, uh, you want us to issue it? Or if you think that the changes were substantial enough and you're not sure I'm gonna get it right, or whatever. Uh, you can say, we want you to bring it back to the next meeting, or I could actually even email it out, um, when the changes are complete. And it could be like, I just send it to one of the committee members. And they would go ahead and say, okay, it looks good. Now go ahead and issue it final. I am still going to run it by Mike Riley before I issue it anyway. Okay. But so, you know, that's, there's different options on how you want to approve it, but you know, it won't go to the other parties until it's approved, pending or not pending, whatever you want.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion. Can I do that as chair? I think I can.
Anna, can I jump in before you make a motion?
Speak!
I would just, for me, it would be helpful just to see what it would look like after the, the changes are made. Uh, as Quinn was saying, you know, on the day of, it's not enough time for me to digest all of this here. So, you know, I, I trust everyone, so it's like, okay, that, that looks pretty good. But it really doesn't give me a, a lot of time to chew on it and see if there's anything that I'd like to, uh, suggest or add to it. But go ahead, Jenny.
Well, I'll just say that in this particular case, this is gonna be, these are budget suggestions for next year or for the coming year, you know? So it's not, I, I don't see that there would be a problem that we actually wait until our next meeting if people wanted to do that, to finalize this. So I could go ahead and make my changes, send it out earlier. Uh, it, it had been our intent to send it out earlier and I apologize that we didn't get it to you guys earlier, but, um, yeah, we could actually just bring it back to our next meeting since there's no urgency on this. It's not like everyone's waiting to sign a contract, but you wanna hear what the auditor had to say first. So, uh, I, I think it would be fine if that's what the committee wants, is to just go ahead and make the changes and bring it back to the next meeting.
Max, please go ahead.
I second what, what Marwan, uh, said. I think given that the time is there, um, and also the importance of the budget holistically, it it essentially drives the entire city government. Uh, I think it's, it's important to get the message, um, you know? Communicate in the right way.
Okay, anybody else? Cause usually what happens is you make a motion and then there's discussion. Go ahead, Deborah.
We're having our discussion first, but maybe I can synthesize. Maybe I can synthesize this into a motion which is to, uh, maybe we don't even need a motion. If we're all good with Jenny just taking our suggestions and we review it the next meeting and that's when we decide yea, yea or nay. That hardly seems like it needs a motion. Unless I'm being wildly informal.
We've always been.
I apologize and I jumped in because I thought, you know, it was like, oh, let's do a motion. It was gonna be like, oh, it's final. We were gonna be able to discuss after, so.
That's how Robert's rules has it, Marwan, is that you make a motion and then you discuss and then you vote.
Gotcha, okay.
So, yeah.
Does anybody else have any discussion on this motion that has not yet been made? Okay, so I move. I understand the value of caution. Um, and letting time pass and making sure you get it right. I would also suggest that, for example, on page one, here's the entirety of the changes. This list of considerations is not intended to be comprehensive. Uh, we're adding the phrase, nor in, listed in order of importance. Right, just making that clear. On page two, we have I believe zero changes. Is that correct? On page three, we have again zero changes. So far, so good. On page four, are there any changes here?
I think page three, actually, we were considering moving the strategic priorities to the very top.
Well, that would, then we could, um, change the scope to in other words, if we're gonna prioritize one thing, then we would have to go through and prioritize everything, I believe.
That's fair.
Which, um, so on page four, I would like to take this to council, i- is my goal for them to also be considering. Because a lot of this needs council input. So if my impression that none of the changes are of any magnitude is correct, then I could do that. So that's my secret agenda.
Except we don't release reports to council.
You faded out, Deb.
Sorry, we don't release reports to council until the report is final. So we don't shop this stuff around before it's final. Right, it stays in the audit committee until it's released.
Okay, so we can't, um, so here was my motion. Hang on, just one second. So it, are there any other major changes to this memo other than the one I have mentioned?
I, I would just say, not that we know so far, but to honor both Marvin and Quinn's lack of familiarity with the document. I think it's fair to come back with the changes we've mentioned so far and push approval to our next meeting.
Alternatively, uh, they could have like to the end of this week to, uh, contact me in any way they see fit. Uh, with any suggestions that they have.
That wouldn't break quorum.
Well.
Yeah, and then I can, uh, work with them on that and incorporate the changes that we decide are appropriate. If there's anything of great significance, we can wait and let the whole committee weigh in if it's, uh, smaller things or just embellishing some of the things that are already there. Uh, you know, we can do that most likely without the whole committee weighing in. We've done this before where we just get some, uh, additional feedback. And I do need to still run it by Mike Riley before it's finalized, but that would speed up the process for getting it, um, pushed out.
Anna, Quinn has his hand up. I, I just wanna say, you know.
I have Zoom here. Um, Jenny, had you finished? Okay, Quinn, please go ahead.
Yeah, let me defer to Marwan and then I'll, I'll take that for her.
Okay, Marwan, shoot, please go ahead.
Uh, I was just gonna say, you know, just piggybacking on what Max was saying, you know, again, the, the budget is important. And I think that as this is coming through us first, we kinda set the tone. So if we rush things and it kinda puts everyone on this quickened pace, but if we slow down a little bit, I, I think we can control the pace. I think it's, it's more important to be a little bit more, more methodical and slower with things than just rushing through for the sake of, of checking it off and getting it done.
I'd like to respond to that before I call on Quinn, which is, here's my thing once more, is I'd actually like se- several of these changes to happen this year, twenty twenty-three. Like, and the ones I'm talking about are not in the actual content of the budget, but the ones on the first page. That requires extensive rescheduling for, um, all of the staff, which they will either A, do, B, not do, or C, something I can't foresee, or none of us can foresee. I think that the outreach opportunity, increasing the outreach opportunities is something that we should start talking about at council. And Max, I s- I see you. So I, I'm totally not trying to tick check off the box. I vow. If I were a scout, I would vow on scout's honor. Quinn, please go ahead, then, then Jenny.
Sure, I, I was just gonna say that I was able to kinda digest as the meeting's going on, but I'm gonna defer to the consensus of the committee as, uh, whether or not we wanna, um, push it to the next meeting, or if you just need written comment to Jenny. I'm, I'm fine with either.
Thank you. Jenny, please go ahead and then Max.
I, I don't think that there's, uh, again, it might be Christine that can better answer this, but I don't think there's any reason why you couldn't uh, share verbally us, the ones that you feel you wanna get on the table. You can say that, you know, the draft report uh, is recommending the outreach and some ideas presented or however you wanna do it. I, I don't see why you can't get ahead of it. It's not, uh, it's not like we're gonna be pulling that piece out. You know, we're just tightening a few things up is all right. I mean, Marwan, you're, you're not anticipating that something would come out as much as you're thinking there. But I don't wanna get into your head. But you, you might have some additional, uh, comments or some tightening up. I, I don't think that you're gonna come back.
Yeah, I don't see anything radical. Yeah, no.
Yeah, you're just, uh, there might be some more things that come to mind or tightening up here and there. So I, I don't think that there would be a problem, Anna, if you, uh, shared some of the insight. You just can't share the document itself yet.
I will not share the document. If I knew a secret Masonic sign, I'd be making it. Uh, is everybody on the, do we have a consensus of the committee that it's okay to discuss increasing outreach opportunities, um, and opportunities for public engagement with council? Just that? That's, look at that. Compromise the American way. Okay, then I will do that. I have made an action note. Um, Quinn, Marwan, if you have further questions, you'll get with Jenny during the next week or two?
Perfect.
Does that sound good? Okay. All right, it's only six oh five PM and we're moving on to the next part of the agenda. Yay!
I just want clarification. Are you gonna be wanting me to issue this before the next meeting, or are you still thinking that it will come back?
I myself, uh, am just voting that this should be approved by the audit committee. Um, but I'm just voting and that doesn't seem to be the general consensus, so not fighting it. Yeah, Deborah, please go ahead.
I think maybe we do need a specific motion to, um, for Jenny to take comments via email. And then can we, and Christine, I'm directing this to you, can we, can we approve something via email? I think we can. I think we've determined that we can.
There's an issue with doing action by email. We, we could violate quorum and that would be a violation of the OPMA. And also, if you have, if you have consensus to bring this back later, you do not need a motion. Um, it's if you're, and if you're saying there's consensus, you want to make the changes and then have it issued. I don't believe you need a motion either. And I'm also following OPMA and we have nobody attending, but if you did make a motion and take action, we'd have to open it up for public comment, so. Just, the idea of committees is you kind of reserve the action for the high-level stuff. And if we're still at a draft memo stage, I think consensus works um, just fine because you're all declaring, um, your, um, what do you call it, your.
Intent.
Thank you.
You can spell me when my blood sugar falls, as it will do really soon.
We still have to do the work plan, just saying.
Yeah, moving right along.
Yeah, yeah, let's.
Okay. So this will come back to us, um, at, on March twenty-seventh, um, with these minor changes, and at that point, we will either A, approve it, B, not approve it, or do something else. Okay. Back to the agenda. Come to me, my little agenda. Okay.
Oh, I think it's the, uh, status of the impark.
There we go. Um. Nope. Hang on, sorry about this. Okay, so the status of the PSA with, with impark, is it still delayed? Is that correct?
It's delayed further. So it had been, uh, did, we couldn't do anything because it wasn't gonna be signed until the end of December. And you, you can't audit a contract until there's been some activity going on with it, if you're auditing compliance. So we thought that, oh, well, you know, mid-year we'll be ready to go, but they actually signed an extension of the old contract until the end of March, while the parties continue to negotiate. So this will not be ready until fall or so, something like that. So we need to, so that will bring us to three B, which is the proposed updates to the work plan. So not only the proposed updates, but, uh, you need to tell me what your priority is because it's my next project, because parking's not gonna happen for a while.
Okay. Um, I have, uh, did everybody get a? Sorry.
I can't, I cannot.
A, can we take a two-minute break here? Is that okay? Yeah? All right, Deborah, you had a question?
Yeah, I can't find my agenda and the work plan, I think, was attached to that. So while we're on break, Christine, could you, uh, forward your agenda again, please? Thank you.
Okay, are you taking a two-minute break?
Yep.
Okay, I'll pause the recording. Okay, we are now.
Okay, so everybody has the work plan?
I don't know if everyone's back yet.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Um, how can we, in the future, um, and I'm just asking all of you who have come back, how can we in the future make sure that all the materials are ready before the day of the meeting? Like, could I move my pre-meeting with you back? Would that be of use? How can I be of help?
It just was a, uh, a fluke.
Okay.
Usually we, we, Christine and I have better coordination, you know, it's, uh, my last day working was Wednesday. She usually sends the packet out Friday. And we just didn't coordinate well enough on that, that memo should have been in the packet, so.
Okay.
It was unfortunate. I realized it when I got in this morning and opened the packet. Oh, darn. So I do apologize that I know it would have been helpful to have it over the weekend.
I, you know, I have Monday off technically, theoretically, so it was easy for me. Um, but great. So it was easy for me, um, but great, a fluke is wonderful, so nothing to, nothing to fix. Isn't that dreamy?
We'll coordinate better in the future.
Okay, so the work plan.
So I would, I'll I'll say that um
Yes.
I I know that Anna's probably getting ready to say this anyway, but uh she did provide some additional ideas. We didn't actually include them in the work plan at this point. Uh, because normally we discuss it as a committee before it it gets added. So I don't know, Anna, if you want to uh share your ideas, or I I have them in front of me if you want me to do that.
Um. Am I being like kind of a bumpshus chair? Is this really like Jenny, you're supposed to run the meeting? Because if so, you know, let me know, yeah?
No, I'm sorry. I I wasn't trying to steal your show. I just was.
No, I didn't think so. Okay, this is a very Northwest conversation that we're having. Um, so I was thinking of a couple of things. One is um we clear-cut our watershed forest. Um, and Kami Appleback, who is the Water Department Division Manager, basically, she's in charge of water, uh, did a presentation in, I think, twenty twenty, Quinn? Um, on the the net profit of doing so was a hundred and fifty thousand. I don't know if she included um, the salary of, we now have an urban forester, Sean Walsh, who focuses exclusively on the watershed forest. He covers the watershed. I couldn't resist that. Um. Um, maintaining the roads, uh, the loss of filtration, the extra fire danger of slash piles, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I I don't know if a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the true net profit. And so that was one thing I thought we might perhaps want to consider on this work plan.
Just to be clear, we didn't clear-cut the entire watershed, just when they log it. They they clear-cut it when they when they do logging, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, they, I think they
You scared me for a second.
Oh, no, 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 my bad. Uh, they did some twenty
The item, the item for us be to examine um what? I mean, wh- what's Jenny's to do here?
To determine the actual net profit.
Okay.
Of of doing so.
Of that policy? Okay.
Yeah.
I would think that's a little challenging, because I I agree uh on that that is valuable, and I I understand the the externalities involved, but it's it's an economic kind of argument, I think. Uh, and partly, I think it's out of the scope of of what an auditor specializes in. But Jenny, maybe uh correct me if if you think that you could you could tackle that.
Yeah, I I would need a little clarity on what it is that you really wanna know. So, because the net profit can be different depending on what it is you're wanting to know about it. So for example, how much would the city save or lose if they no longer cut? They no longer harvested the timber, because uh it's not necessarily the same as the net profit. So some of the activities that are charged to the P and L in forestry, in forestry um are bound to have to continue no matter what. So even if you discontinue cutting the forest, they still have to manage the watershed. Okay, I don't know the details of it, because I haven't looked at it yet, but surely, my expectation is that some of those costs have to continue. So if that, you know, I would have to know if that's the question that you're wanting to know is how much could the city save if they no longer cut the forest?
We contract out the logging to Lucignan Forestry. But if this is an overly complex thing for the Audit Committee, then, you know, so be it.
I I don't know if anyone has said that it's too complex, because I I don't think it's too complex for me, the job itself. Um. It's just knowing, making sure I understand what it is that you you wanna know about it. You know, and is it how much money the city would save if they weren't cutting the timber, then, you know, that that's the question that I would answer. But if it's something else, you have to tell me.
Um, yeah, Deborah, please go ahead.
That was just, so Jenny kind of got it. My question I'm not a huge, I'm by no means a fan of clear-cutting. But I also don't know what the economics of selective logging versus clear-cutting are, or if there's a way to quantify the additional sedimentation into our watershed, et cetera, you know, those quantifying those for someone with Jenny's skill set is going to be very different from an environmental scientist's skill set.
Okay.
So I hear that. It's noble.
Okay, um, then unless Jenny, you are planning to go back and pursue a doctorate in environmental science at the UW in the next couple of weeks?
No.
Okay. Then let's move right along. Um, so a second one that I was considering was um I'm sure you guys all know that we are having the Dickens of a time, hiring and retaining workers at City of Bremerton. Um. Our salaries are, from what I can tell, are quite in line even with Bainbridge salaries, and yet we're having just a tough, tough time. So I thought would the issuing of childcare vouchers to City of Bremerton employees increase um both hiring and retention of city staff?
I don't know, are there any exit interviews that are being conducted to find out why people are leaving the turnover so high or frequent?
Yes. Yes, there are.
What what are they, what are they reporting?
I don't know. I have, um, Quinn, have you been able to find out?
No, and actually, this is the first time I'm hearing about retention or hiring issues, so I'd like to see some some data on that. That'd be interesting.
Okay, um, Charlotte Nelson, the head of HR, has mentioned this. Public Works mentions it very often. DCD mentioned that their entire code enforcement staff is currently zero. That kind of thing.
Mike Riley mentioned it.
Yeah. Um.
Anna, I'm the, again, childcare vouchers is noble, but um are there places where that childcare could be had? People I know with children are having a really, really hard time finding openings in childcare facilities. So vouchers are great, but it's kind of like Section Eight housing vouchers. Who will take them?
Who will bell the cat? Max, please go ahead.
Hmm, I will also suggest that the the current ferry situation with with Bremerton could impact this as well. I mean, granted, the fast ferries you run to Bremerton Monday to Saturday now, but uh it's still not enough, and Bainbridge's ferries are more reliable and and faster. Um, and a lot of, I feel like especially of the younger generation to take upon some of these lower-paid jobs would be more willing to commute to Bainbridge versus Bremerton. That's just putting something on there.
Okay, anybody else on this one?
Just that I would like to see some of the exit interview information, so we can align whatever tangible or intangible benefit that can be linked to retention could be, you know, where it makes sense.
Yep, me too.
Yeah, I wonder if that's the avenue that that Jenny could explore is, you know, what are what are strategies the city could undertake to um in improve recruiting, like what do other cities do to recruit and find out what those retention issues are and have other cities our size dealt with this, and if so, how?
Well, uh, perhaps Jenny, you could get an answer where I have been unsuccessful.
Yeah.
Yeah, Max, please go ahead.
I'm also curious what the challenges in getting those exit interview um records are. Is it a confidentiality argument, or I thought that all records are public as far as uh city government goes?
I can't say. I know that I have asked, and I have not yet received any answer at all. So it could be confidentiality. I can't say. I mean, I can speculate idly, and I do that a lot, but that's not gonna help us. Yeah, Quinn, please go ahead.
Sorry, folks, I I have a bad connection, which is why my video's off, so I'm kind of hearing things in and out, but was the question, um, how do we get a hold of personnel records, and does the PDR have an exemption for that, or?
No, 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 it was just what uh Max was asking, what's the difficulty in getting the gist of the exit interviews?
Oh, yeah, su- sure, so I know uh I I've dealt with PDR requests for some time, um, and usually things like personnel files are are exempted. From from what I know, you can't just ask for somebody's personnel file. That's something that would be exempted under the Act.
Oh, yeah, but would getting the gist of the exit interview also be a forbidden act?
I think that's a question for Kylie and Charlotte, but
Okay.
I guess it would have to be the specific data that you're looking for.
Okay, yeah, Max, thank you, Quinn. Please go ahead, Max.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that I I know I volunteered for the Census Bureau, and the way they get around that is summarizing the data in in you know, non-identifiable formats. Um, so even if it's just, say, all employees, you know, that have exited, and then what were the top, you know, ten reasons? I feel like that would be reasonable, a starting point, but um, you know, Quinn, uh, your 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 contacts would definitely be able to maybe lead us on the right path there.
Okay, well, that's the head of Human Resources and the city attorney that he's referring to. Okay. Um, I did the census too. It was fun. Um, I learned how to refer to people as person number one. Oh. Okay, um, and then the third one is one that came out that I had proposed, and it came out of council this past Wednesday, which is to look at consultants that we are using repeatedly, like um, Parametrics, SCJ, Active Construction, Inc., et cetera, and um, determine if there are recurring elements in them that could be more efficiently and more cost-effectively served by hiring staff. So
Because we have such an easy time hiring staff, right?
Yeah, nothing like, you know, having a really good lead-in, but this was something that the entire council wanted me to bring to audit, because so I am bringing it to you, and you know, my timing is so good.
Yeah, I think that could be a really valuable analysis um for the city and could feed budget discussions as well.
Well, the genesis of this was Tom Nucky, the Director of Public Works, said that hiring consultants is usually at least three times the cost of doing something in-house. And Mike Riley said that that was a very conservative estimate, and it was probably more like at least four to five times as expensive. So
And is that just the raw cost without bringing in um, benefits, et cetera? Is it just like salary versus consulting cost? Because there's more to employee cost than just salary, right?
No, they, he was reckoning the cost to the city of hiring somebody, which is their salary plus all the other.
Okay, good.
Good.
Yeah, yeah.
The true cost.
Yeah.
And it was still it was still that, the the discrepancy was still that large.
I mean
Yeah, Max. Oh, I'm sorry, Deborah.
Although I I'd suggest maybe to look into if he hasn't considered it, you know, just the fact that consultants work for a brief period of time, and you have to hire an employee for a longer period of time. Um, and whether or not you could shift their specific resources to another project. Um, so, yes, although a consultant may be four to five times more expensive, but if you only need them for two months versus an employee for a year or two, um, it it may shift the amount a little bit.
That, yeah, that's why the the whole recurring thing, because we are looking, like those three consultants that I just mentioned, we're looking at contracts for them at least every month. I mean, council is looking at them.
Yeah.
Um. Okay, so
We also, the other advantage, and and this is stuff Jenny could get into, but the other advantage with consultants is you can fire consultants pretty easily, much more easily than you can a city employee, and you can find different consultants, and they have to compete against one another, so it it it's a different, and I believe, I know in private industry, it hits a different part of the budget. So it doesn't hit that HR part of the budget.
Had you finished, Deborah?
Yeah.
Okay. So that is true. The other thing that is true is that when you have employees, you have historical memory, you have institutional memory, you have somebody who says, you know, oh, man, that project I worked on failed. Um, what can I do? Whereas a consultant feels like, hey, you know? Yeah, Max, please go ahead.
I'm a, I'm a little biased to that one, because I was a consultant before, but I will say that consultants also have a broad view of many different situations that an individual might um, so that's something to keep in mind, is they've seen sometimes dozens of different examples that they're able to leverage, um, which an employee, and he has it, and so the historical knowledge is valuable, but it has to be weighed against a a broader skill set.
Okay.
Question, Anna, is you're saying you're, the council's looking at contracts every month, like how long are consultants consulting? Is this an ongoing thing? Is there a an end end date to consulting, or, okay, we're good? We're ready to move forward with what there's, what they suggested, or it just seems like it's a permanent fixture, the way that it's kind of being presented?
Um, okay, so here's an example, and Quinn, please weigh in if if you find that I'm like straying from the path of truth. Um, Parametrics, and I'm just bringing them up, because a lot of the work they do is the work I used to do. So I understand them a little better. Um, they came in on the Oyster Bay sewer replacement. And then when that contract was modified the first time, their scope was increased. And then when the contract was modified for, it it's been modified many times. Um, and each time Parametrics does a small additional piece or a large additional piece, um, the Manette Beach Sewer uh, which is um, it, I I believe, I could well be wrong on this one, but I believe that Parametrics is doing one part of the laterals on the sewer there. Right? Um, sewage is something that keeps coming up, because we have a federal mandate to keep our waters clear. You know, so it's like, we have to do it. Um. So is there something that Parametrics or any of these other companies is doing that they keep coming in and doing that we could have somebody? Sewage, we shall always have with us and so that would be a, for instance, of, you know, every, like, these are things that could be done in-house if, if we had a, you know, somebody like myself, but with more education that was really fascinated by sewage.
I mean, that, that seems to make sense to me, Anna, you know?
Okay, um, is it the consensus of the committee that we add this to the work plan for review next month? Okay. All right, then Jenny, have I gone through all of the things that were on the email? Hang on, I could go to my email. It's a wild and crazy idea.
Well, you had the sustainability item. I don't know if you wanted to.
Okay, so this one is just tough. So I'm just pitching it to you guys to just say, this is tough. The council is pretty close to unanimous against studying sustainability or working on sustainability of Bremerton. But self-sufficiency is more Bremertonian. Like, what can we do to keep ourselves off-grid? You know, like solar panels over parking lots, you know, so that the energy we make is here and we distribute it here. Can we help people grow and expand urban farms? Can we make more opportunities for like, not block parties, but not block captains either? But like keeping like small, very neighborhood mutual aid happening? Because natural disasters are coming at least once a year now. And once a natural disaster hits, if it's too hot, you can't walk more in a block. If it's a snowpocalypse, you can't walk more in a block. You know, when the big, big one hits, you can't walk more in a block. So that's what I was thinking, or what are the top five or even the top three? Thank you, Jenny, your memory is impeccable. Actions, specific granular actions that the city could take to increase self-sufficiency among Bremertonians.
I wonder if a better word is resiliency.
I think it's a better word and I think sustainability is also a great word. But here's what happened to me all last year is when I used either of those words, they all turned away from me there on the group W badge.
So you need is a document to convince them of that, right?
I thought if we just focused on self-sufficiency, that would, and shortening supply chains, which I think people could really get behind, that that, that that might appeal to a majority of Bremerton residents. Whereas resiliency and sustainability do not appeal, strongly does appeal. Quinn, is that accurate?
Yeah, I'm sorry, sorry, still breaking up. Yeah, I'm hesitant to, you know, speak on behalf of all residents of Bremerton, but that, that seems accurate to me.
Well, certainly all, like, the very clear majority of council is not like self-sufficiency, I think, might be more appealing. So it's a shot. I just keep chipping away at the fact that, you know, the climate crisis is real. Max, please go ahead.
So what would we be asking Jenny, Jenny to do on that one?
Exactly.
What would be the uh, top five most effective things we could do to increase self-sufficiency in Bremerton? Is that overly vague?
In terms of community involvement or in terms of individual, I guess, self-sufficiency, to use your word, but you know, something they could do on their own? Or because you, you use community block parties as an example, so we're trying to narrow in on, are we talking about how do they become stronger neighbors with each other or what do they do individually to become self-sufficient?
Um, I'm talking specifically about actions the city could take.
So this is community-wide self-sufficiency then, huh?
Well, citywide, like what could, you know, it's like what Obama said, it's like government doesn't make things perfect, but it can make them better. Um, hang on, Quinn is speaking from the chat. Okay, he's, he's pre-apologizing for his bad connection, which may cause him to drop off. Um.
I just don't hear a clear enough ask. Again, let's focus on Jenny's skill set. And what would we have her examine and produce data around that she has access to and most of the data she's going to have access to is city-produced data. So what would we be asking her to examine? For what outcome?
When I pitched this, Deborah, Quinn, I see your hand and I'll be right there. I, I, I said, this is ecology and here's how ecology works is you have like multiple, multiple variables. And
I get all that. I just don't know how it relates to Jenny's skill set.
Yeah.
Or this committee.
Yeah, I pitched it and I said, this would be tough and Jenny, Jenny brought it up. So that's why we're talking about it.
I think one, to maybe, to maybe like give an idea to see if there's any, any support behind it. Maybe Jenny could look at some larger cities to see what kind of programs that they put on to engage the community that maybe Bremerton doesn't have. I mean, granted, Bremerton is not a large community, but just going back to the idea of a community block party. I don't see that happening in Bremerton and I've been here two years and I know Seattle, you know, it's, they, for, for an example, they give an easy way to, to hold, uh, get a free permit to shut down a street to, to pull neighbors together to have a gathering. Things like that. I don't know other examples, but easy things that Bremerton could leverage and, and take on, you know, as best, best practice for maybe larger cities like Tacoma or Seattle could be something Jenny could look at. But I agree with Deborah that I'd struggle to see Jenny taking a more
Okay.
area approach to that.
Um, I'm just going to say that before the pandemic, there were block parties and that Seattle has, and most major cities have an entire sustainability department. But, okay. Um, Quinn, you've been, had your hand up for a while.
Sure, thanks. Yeah, I, I think, and everybody else who's been on this committee longer than I have, I know I've only been on it a little more than a year, but what I pictured the committee and the purpose is, is, is more of like what an internal control auditor would be doing at a large corporation, right? Like consider the municipality as a corporation, look to make sure that there's specific controls going on for, you know, liability for theft, efficiencies, things like that. So I think that the ask that we need to be asking of Jenny is exactly what Deborah is saying is, is data that's already ascertainable. You know, that's kind of why I was pushing parking as far as, let's take a look at how many parking tickets have been written, how many toes, what the cost kind of along your vein on a, of, you know, contracting out consultants versus, you know, do we need specific people who are working full-time jobs? That would be specific hard data that we could look at and say, okay, the in-park parking contract is coming up in the budget season. Does this make sense from a financial standpoint, what we're getting from that? Versus now we're going to ask Mike Riley to do a financial analysis of putting a couple FTEs to do the jobs of the, the contractor of the in-park person. So that's just like my specific example that I think the committee is more geared towards rather than policy white papers is kind of what I'm hearing. Talking about sustainability, things like that.
Okay, let's move on then. I mean, that makes sense. I'll quit talking about it.
Can I jump in? Because I, I kind of took this conversation and you started a different way. So you're talking about self-sufficiency. So what I was hearing was, you know, does the city align with the county, you know, if there, we have the big earthquake and horses washed out. You know, are we going to have food, water? We're going to be able to have emergency management services for our elderly or disabled, for our homeless? Is there a grade or are there things that we need to do to be prepared for that? So am I off base on that? Because that's, that's what I was hearing when you first brought that up.
That's totally where I'm going, but what I'm getting from everybody else is that I'm fascinated by this, you're fascinated by this, this isn't like an audit committee thing. Does that make any sense?
But, but wouldn't that be an audit to see where we, where we're at? And as far as like, you know, the college does shooter drills and earthquake drills and so where does this city stand as far as if this thing happened tomorrow? Are we, are we ready? And where are our deficits?
So basically, so review our emergency preparedness.
Casey Dem. It's up County Department of Emergency Management. Yeah, Max.
Yeah, I, I think I, I hear what Marwan's saying and I agree. And I, I just want to leverage kind of what Deborah said. And I think as long as we think of a concrete, actionable objective criteria for Jenny to evaluate, I think that we're on the right track. It's when we kind of leave an open-ended route where I think it could, it could be a struggle. So, you know, to evaluate preparedness and earthquake safety or, or, you know, school shooting drills, I think that's one thing and you could probably, you know, create an action plan on that. And that's, I think that's valuable to maybe discuss, but we probably want to target it a little bit.
Probably want to what?
Target it a little bit. Narrow, narrow the scope, narrow the focus.
Okay.
You know, Anna, to that, you know, this is important to me. So that's why I'm pretty jazzed up about this. But if there was an earthquake tomorrow, you know, how do residents get information? Like, I have no idea how that would happen. Where, where they report somewhere? I think there's value here and I think it can be drilled down. So maybe looking at what the county is doing and how the cities align, or at least how we align with the county's initiatives. And then try to fill in those gaps if there's gaps that need to be filled.
I'm, I'm wondering if this belongs in a department rather than audit.
Like public safety?
Yeah.
Something. I, I feel like it's, you know, typically you think of an auditor as being more of a financial person. So, you know, my background, I'm a CPA, my bachelor's is in business administration with a major in accounting. Emergency preparedness. You know? It, it's a stretch. I mean, I can research and ask people questions and hope that I get the right questions, but I mean, it's, I mean, Max, I, I see your hand up, Max.
Yeah, go ahead, Max, and then Quinn.
Do some aid on that one. I was, I was giving a little bit of just like open-ended. I could see you doing that if you really spent some time on it, but I think the other thing to consider too is, is how the public would, would view Jenny's report on something that she's not exactly a specialist in.
Exactly.
There you go.
So that's something else to consider.
Okay, I gave up on this one several minutes ago. So all I'm doing now is calling on people. Quinn, please go ahead.
Yeah, sure. Marwan, this might be helpful. The Public Safety Committee, which I'm a part of, meets on Thursday. I don't know if you're able to attend as, as somebody that would be able to ask questions. Actually, I'm not even sure if we have public comment on that one. I need to think about that, but what I can do is ask that question as well. I'm guessing that it would be the police chief and the fire chief that would be most tapped into what our emergency preparedness plan is. And so I can at least ask that question and, and see where the, that goes. Because I'm guessing that public safety would, would most likely be where that lives. So happy, happy to do that and, and report back to you.
Ah, that's awesome, Quinn. Thanks.
Also, the Kitsap County Department of Emergency Management has specifics on that and I'll put it in the, I'll put the link in the chat. Yeah?
Well, one, one last inquiry. Can this committee make suggestions if that doesn't exist in any departments? If Quinn goes back and, you know, there's, yeah, it's kind of there, but not, can we, can we do that as a body where Jenny's not doing that, but we're suggesting that some other department take that on? Is that appropriate?
I can do it.
There you go.
So, but, and you know, I mean, I can just do it and I will do it. How's that? And if you send me an email encapsulating it, it would be a big help to my extremely full plate. But I will do it. If I had a lance and a steed, I'd really feel better, but yeah, Quinn, please go ahead.
Sure, I just wanted to add to that. With the caveat, Marwan, you know, having been on council a little over a year and a half now, there's been many things that I'm like, oh, let me, let me just talk to this person. We get in trouble sometimes for veering into separation of powers. So we can't tell the departments to do anything. We can't tell the executive to do anything. But we can certainly make suggestions as a body of the council. So just want to give, you know, clear, because, because I've, it's happened to me multiple times where they're like, yeah, great counselor, but you can't do that. Just want to be transparent about what our powers are and, and how far we can, we can absolutely suggest as a body, but we would have no power to direct a department to do so.
Oh, heck no. No, my, my, when I say I'll bring it up, I mean, I'll bring it up at council. Yeah, Max, please go ahead.
I would also maybe suggest if we, if we do think of things to bring up in a formal setting, that maybe we vote on it. Just to give a little bit more to, to the suggestion that it wasn't, you know, just one, one person on the, on the council suggesting was the council.
Well, minutes are supposed to record action items, so I move that Anna Mokler, Chair of the Audit Committee, bring the suggestion of a clear inter-local agreement between the Kitsap County Department of Emergency Management and the municipality of Bremerton before council at some time at a date to be before this next audit committee meeting and don't make me repeat that. So basically, here's what I'm going to do is just at the next study session during go-to-the-order, I'll say, hey, here's something that came up at audit and the audit committee agrees that this is something that should be brought to council. And so we are seeking your support for or non-support for, I guess, but your opinion of making certain that we are closely synchronized with KC Dem. Kitsap County Department of Emergency Management. Is that okay? Any, anybody like to second that?
Oh, I seconded.
Okay, anyone opposed?
My hand, my hand, my hand is not showing, Anna, but I believe there's an interlocal already in place. I can make note to, to, if there is one in place to just email it to all of you. But there's, there's master plans in place for the county. I believe the cities all have master plans, interlocal is there for KCDEM, but going back to the budget project, I'm, I'm seeing this tie into that same universe of how does this information live online? How is it acceptable to the public? So I'm kind of coming from that angle. So I'll see if I can make any agreements. And so we're not, that you or the audit committee wouldn't be bringing up something that's already done? Or if it, if it's on the periphery and coming back, but I don't see that on the schedule anywhere. But those are only brought back when they're updated. Um, those are only brought back when they're updated. So it might be a while since our last, um, interlocal. Anyway, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Christine. That makes really good sense. Deborah, I'm, I'm gonna be with you in just one second. I, I think that's super smart and thank you for knowing stuff. Deborah, please go ahead.
Yeah, we need to get back to the work plan because Jenny doesn't have anything to work on coming up. And I need to leave soon. So.
Okay.
It's all about me. I wondered, when I look at the work plan, if we. If, if she could work on the second part of the. Parking thing. Without addressing the first part.
Is, is it the cost? Not without knowing what the new contract, not without knowing what the costs will be under the new contract.
Could you compare it to the existing contract just as a starting point, as a place to get started?
Didn't the administration ask you to hold off? Until the negotiations were completed?
Well, I wouldn't get involved in, um, checking the compliance of in-park. I, I think that the answer is somewhat Deb, that I could. Because I have, even knowing that I'm gonna be postponed even longer, you know, I'm not gonna just sit around and do nothing. So. You know, I've started developing somewhat of a work plan for when I do get to go do the compliance audit on parking. So I think that I could start, um, looking at some of the components. And, you know, I mean, there's two sides to it, right? There's the cost of bringing it in-house. Uh, it's just, I'm not sure what. What it is. I think that I can get rolling with it and. I, I would like to have a, a backup. I think if I find that I'm a little bit, uh. I don't wanna be wasting my time.
No, no.
You know, and looking at the cost of bringing it in, but I, I don't know how extensively they're changing it. You know, I can look at the budget, which I did do and saw that there's a, you know, a. A measurable increase in the cost in the budget for.
So you could, you just cut out. A lot of what you just said, just cut out. I'm sorry.
I don't know why that is.
Yeah, I don't either.
Uh, I have a strong signal.
I'd like to, okay, so I, I understand, Deborah, your desire to finally be. Moving ahead on the parking thing. But I would say that the stronger, much stronger impetus of council. And this is at the, at the urging of the people of Bremerton. Is to work on these two items that have to do with affordable, habitable housing. The updating, the surplus city land, city-owned land. Review and the landlord license compliance. That would actually. I, I'm pretty darn certain that here we are representing the, the will of the people of Bremerton.
Great.
Well, that's good because, uh, then we don't have to be guessing what the new contract's gonna be saying and proceeding. You know, a- and then find out that you.
Yep.
You did it wrong. So, uh, picking one of those for my next priority would be great.
Well, updating the surplus land review, um. There's a GIS layer that shows us all the city-owned vacant land and, and, and facilities. Um, is that something in your wheelhouse, Jenny? To, to determine which of those are suitable for developing affordable housing units?
Oh, well, it's not me personally, but you know, I can reach out to the people that know. So somebody from community development. So I can look for the properties. Um, I'm not gonna assume that the GIS. Is correct, you know, because it might not be that. There's a better source, which is, uh, the accounting systems. And then doing some checking to make sure that that's up to date as well. But, yeah, I can get going with that. And then, uh, I would be relying on. Community Development Department as to what the zoning is for these properties.
Okay.
Yep, I think it's in mine and Christine's wheelhouse.
Okay, all right, we've got one. The landlord license compliance is one that just seems so impossibly difficult to me. Cause I just don't know how any part of this works. So over to you guys, Max.
I was just taking a sample. Uh, if there's a way to do a, a random sample of, of. If, if there's a way to do a random sampling of landlord licenses, uh, that the city has on record. And, you know, just statistical analysis would, would indicate if you take a random sample. It's representative of the overall whole. So rather than doing something, you know, neighborhood by neighborhood. Or holistic, you could, you could get a fair representation. Uh, and, and in audit, that's what you do. You have a large, a large sample, uh, that you, a large population to work with.
Well, I, I think it depends on what the purpose is. And I think that we actually want to identify, uh, landlords who have not. Gotten a license. And so I don't think we can, we're gonna need specific people and addresses to point to.
I don't think you can do that though, from an audit perspective, cause I think that you're, you're kind of looking from a, a, a negative. Kind of confirmation aspect, like you, you need, you, you need, you need to first find ones who say that they're, that they're doing a compliant. To check if they're doing it compliant. So you need to go to the database to see which, which people are registered as landlords. Uh, or addresses. I don't know, I don't know the best way to do it, but you need to find a way to, to find the, the whole population. To pick from them, to identify the ones that aren't registered. Um, cause you. Otherwise, y- your only other avenue would be to do a complete test, in my opinion.
The only other avenue would be what?
To do a complete hundred percent test of everybody.
Well, isn't, wouldn't the tax records, um, property tax records indicate? Ownership of a property? And where ownership, owner's address is different from. The actual address and we'd be talking only residential properties, which I think are separated out. Then, I, I don't know, I'm spitballing here, but I'm thinking there, there's a way of getting at this.
Well, there's that, which, uh, I think we've talked about in committees, uh, previously. And then we also have the utilities. So in.
Right.
In some, uh, circumstances, the landlords will pay water, sewer, garbage. And so when, uh. When the billing address in our utility system is different from the physical address, that's a pretty clear indication. So.
Yep.
That's, that's how we were, sorry.
Voter rolls are, are, are another one where it's like. They're registered to vote in one place and their residences in another.
Can, can, uh, can Jenny, can you clarify the scope of, of this one for me again? I, I, I'm trying to understand it better.
Well, the city of Bremerton requires landlords to pay for a license and it's seventy-five dollars a year, I believe. And the funding from that, I believe, goes towards helping with code enforcement. So that, you know, the intent is to make sure that renters have, live in habitable properties. Uh, so we wanna find out, you know, if there are landlords out there, we believe that there are, who aren't licensed. And so it's to identify those people so that we can, you know, up the code enforcement and make sure that the renters in Bremerton. Are living in, uh, habitable properties.
I'm just trying to understand if there's, i- if it, if it would bog you down to do a complete search like that. So even if we started at say voter rolls or utilities and say we found a thousand landlords that technically. The address is mismatched, how much time would it take you to sort through a thousand people? To, to figure out that because of some reason or another, only fifty were actually not compliant. Um, and you, you know, I, I don't wanna bog, bog your time down. Um, so I wanna be careful in, in limiting the scope on, on that a little bit.
Deborah, can you take the meeting for the next two minutes?
Uh, yeah, sure.
Okay, please carry on.
So what is your question then, Max?
Well, just that we, we, we carefully frame your ask, you know, that you're, if, if you were to. Investigate which landlords went on to client, uh, that we maybe start. In a, in a limited basis to see how widespread the risk is. And i- if it is widespread, you know, it'd be expand the scope a little bit, but, you know, I, I wanna be careful that. We don't, we don't cast the net out too wide, only to find out that half of the year was taken to find something. Unsubstantial.
Well, I was picturing that it would be done in coordination with IT. So it wouldn't be me sitting down, uh, inputting a bunch of. Addresses that didn't correspond. It would be hopefully IT writing a. Macro of some sort, doing their magic and extracting the data, say, from the Kitsap assessors. Uh, website. I think that actually the Kitsap assessors website. May even identify some of the properties as being rentals.
Yep.
Yeah.
And in fact, if you started with the list of known licensed landlords and their properties. You could then eliminate those from your search and. Narrow it. So I mean, you could, you know, you could work both ends against the middle, but we, again, we don't have to. Solve this here. I hear what you're saying though, Max, but. This has been. On her work plan for, I wanna say a few years now.
So I'm reading this as, you know, to help ensure dwelling units meet the minimum standards of landlord tenant act. Can you start with those who have levied complaints against their landlords?
Oh, there you go.
Where would they levy them?
Either with, uh, Kitsap Legal, maybe KCR, Bremerton Housing Authority.
Just one of the things I wanted to interject here is that unless, um, I missed it. The policy of DCD is, um. Cause they do business licenses, yeah? So each landlord pays one seventy-five dollar fee, no matter how many properties they own. So you might not have an accurate list of all of the properties owned by that person. Just saying.
Yeah.
I think this is a great thing to do. I don't know enough about what would be necessary to do it. So I'm just listening to all you guys.
To me, it warrants some ex- exploration on her part to then further refine the scope perhaps. To Max's point. Like, if it looks like she'd have to boil the ocean to get a meaningful answer. Then I would agree, Max, that maybe she needs to consider a statistical sampling method of some sort. At least as a place to start.
So Jenny, would this be enough for you to be going on with for the next month to updating the surplus land review? And refining the landlord license compliance scope? Would you be able to like stretch that out?
I think I could manage. I think so. You have a preference of which one you want me to, uh, tackle first. Perhaps the surplus land review, since there seem to be some questions and concerns about the landlord license compliance.
Yeah, that sounds great. Um, do we know, has anyone else conducted this landlord license compliance? Study? So I think this is a task for superhero Coughlin. Let's toss this one over to Jeff and have him do a survey of cities across the nation. That have successfully conducted a landlord license compliance review. Does that sound, everybody okay with that?
Sure.
Yeah?
Yeah.
All right. Um, so can I tell him that it is the consensus of the city that we are? Asking him if he happens to know anything? Is that okay?
Yeah, cause then he'll take that as a challenge, won't he? Yep.
He takes every, it's, it's, it's a very engaging. Character virtue. Um, I'm gonna say that it is seven-ten. Jenny has the, done a. Kalubal of work, if not a kalubal and a half, right? Um, we've given her something to, so that, you know, to keep her from being idle. That wa- that was your whole thing, right Jenny? You just didn't want any idleness to happen in the coming month?
No, I'm, I'm good. You guys, uh, lined me up.
Okay. Um, is there anything else on here that we can usefully talk about with low blood sugar and missing one committee meeting? Cause I'm happy to do it if so.
The blood sugar needs to be addressed.
Yep, let's just, can we move to adjourn?
We can totally move to adjourn. I moved to adjourn.
I second.
Okay, so before we complete the adjournment, I have to say thank you. You guys are really wonderful. This is my favorite committee ever. Okay. Thank you. Stay warm and dry.
Thanks to everybody.
Bye, thank you guys. Good night, thanks.
Hey, thanks Anna for checking in on me, making sure I was good to go for tonight.
You are, wanted you to be. You're welcome.
All right, good night.
Good night everyone.
Night.
Night, Marwan.
Christine.